Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Parkway Board of Education Special Board Meeting for Monday, December 21st, 2020. If you'd all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, we will begin the meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will dive right into public comments this evening. It's at this time that we provide an opportunity for citizen comment in an effort to maintain an open and respectful dialogue with our community. Public comment session is not the appropriate forum for addressing individually identifiable student and/or personnel matters. Therefore, due to privacy laws protecting students and employees, comments about these matters should not include personally identifiable information about particular students or employees. Members of the public, staff, and students are encouraged to utilize established policies and procedures for offering suggestions or addressing concerns and complaints prior to bringing the issue before the board. Please be mindful that the meetings of the board, including your statements at the podium or virtually here, are broadcast and you are responsible for any public comments you make. In lieu of a public statement, you may choose to submit your comments to the board in writing. Also, due to time constraints and the need to complete the primary responsibilities of our meeting agenda, we cannot respond during the meeting. So you will receive a response from us in writing. We are always available to have an open dialogue outside of our meetings and can be reached by email or phone using contact information on the Parkway website. Tonight, we have 12 speakers in one written statement. Each speaker will have two minutes to make their statement. Once your time expires, we will automatically move to the next scheduled speaker. When we are in person, we are able to provide a timer on the screen, but for these virtual meetings, you will need to keep track of your own time. When your time is concluded, your microphone will automatically be muted. At that time, please exit the meeting and rejoin the live stream available to the public. And the first person we have up to speak is Wendy Sorenski.
Wendy, you should now be able to unmute.
Hi, thanks so much for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Wendy Sorenski, and I'm an English teacher at Parkway North. I would like to begin with a story about the art of turning. When I was 12, I went to summer camp and not only learned to sail, but also participated in a race. To win, we had to sail around a series of buoys and then cross the finish line first. Two of the sailing instructors sailed with me, and with only one buoy to turn around remaining, we were out in front. As we approached the last buoy, I asked, is it time to turn? Can I turn yet? The sailing instructor said, no, you don't tack until you've passed the buoy. Excitement got the best of me, though, and I asked again. I got the same response. I asked once more, and this time, because the sailing instructors were excellent teachers who understood the value of failure, they said, go ahead. As soon as I completed the turn, I understood my mistake. I had turned too soon. Had I waited a few more minutes before turning, just long enough to make it past the buoy, I would have maintained my lead and won the race. That day on Lake of the Ozarks, the stakes were low and personal. I lost a sailing race, but gained a lesson. Today, however, as the district again contemplates returning to in-person learning, the stakes are not low. Though I understand the desire to return students to in-person learning, it is too soon to make the turn. Of great concern is the district's inability to guarantee implementation of a key mitigation strategy, social distancing. The district can require students to wear masks, but because it cannot guarantee social distancing, it is not able to provide even a minimum safe learning environment. I wish it were otherwise, but it is not. The district turned too soon back in October, and I believe it is on the verge of repeating that mistake now. We are so, so close to getting past COVID, but because we are not there yet, I urge you, Dr. Marty, and esteemed members of the board, to stay the course rather than turn too soon and miss the target. Thank you.
President Todd, you're muted.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Joanna Filer.
I do not see Ms. Filer in attendance.
Okay. Next on the list is Nicole Graham.
I do not see Mrs. Graham in attendance.
Okay. Next up, I have Chloe Malonis.
Chloe will be with us in just a moment.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak at this board meeting. I'm Chloe Malonis, and I'm a sixth grader at Parkway South Middle. And I believe that the board should approve Dr. Marty's proposal to return to in-person school starting next semester. This year has been very challenging for me because as a sixth grader, starting a new school, it's impossible to make new friends and we can't go to school. It's also challenging understanding all of the assignments I have to turn in and get done. This problem is common for all of my friends and siblings. I have also had problems with missing assignments and having trouble keeping up with eight classes in a week. It's also hard with the Wi-Fi technology problems and many other things. It can be very hard when you work from home because if you have kids, they can bark. Also, if you have siblings, they can distract you. Now, I would like to tell you about this incident that happened to me just this Friday. On Friday, I was getting ready to get into my Zoom when I opened my school Chromebook, and there were subtitles on my screen saying that I've been hacked. There were also inappropriate pictures on my screen. This caused me disruptions to miss all of my morning classes, and I had to catch up on all of the assignments I missed. I also had to spend an hour on a call with my mom and the Parkway help desk. This made me feel very angry because I had to miss two classes and spend half of my day trying to figure it out. Where if I were at school, I could have taken my Chromebook to the tech teacher and he or she would know how to fix it. This is why I think we should go back to school the next semester. Thank you for letting me speak at this board meeting.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Pat McPartland.
Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, board members, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. I'm Pat McPartland, President of Parkway PNEA. And as my time this evening is brief, and so I'd like to make three points. First, I want to acknowledge your leadership. Being a school board member is a complex task in ordinary times, but in our current pandemic, there have been many added layers to the issues faced and choices that have to be made. The role of a board member is a hard one, and your attention to it is appreciated. Second, in regard to the plan that will be shared this evening by the district leadership, it's important to know that the trepidation expressed by many educators stem from the current COVID conditions in our community. Although there are positive trends in current statistics, the number of cases per hundred thousand are still considered high spread in all of the districts zip codes. River of transmission remains at 1.08, and the test positivity rate in St. Louis County is over 15%. All indicators that increase exposure of students and staff are not necessarily warranted. More importantly, these concerns come from a lack of information about the district's plan and how it will provide for the safety of students and staff and allow for continuity of education for those students attending in a face-to-face manner. This leads to my third point. In last week's meeting, a board member suggested that before plans or initiatives are presented to the board, they've received input from many groups, including staff. In other times, this is very true, but this has not been true with the creation of the plans that will be shared this evening. This is a mistake that can and should be remedied. Parkway's educators have delivered high-quality instruction to their students throughout the tumult with this first part of the year. They will continue to do so. They want continuity for those students in their learning. They want a plan that addresses concerns about safety for students and staff and reflects the reality of conditions in our area. We ask that there's collaboration with educators to create such a plan for second semester and look forward to that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Lindsay Presson.
President Todd, did not see Lindsay in attendance.
Okay. Next up, then, I have Maura McCracken.
Ms. McCracken will be with us in just a moment.
Hello, my name is Moira McCracken. I'm a Parkway resident, a parent of three Parkway students, a proud Parkway teacher with 19 years of experience, and a member of the PNEA Executive Board. First, thank you all very much for everything you have done for our district. I'm here today to talk about the lack of teachers' input in decisions. My biggest disappointment this school year is that district administration has left teachers out of the planning process. I'm not talking about surveys or thought exchanges, I'm talking about real problem-solving collaboration. Let me tell you, teaching right now, in this moment, is unlike any kind of teaching that has ever happened. I have learned so much about being a pandemic teacher in just the past few months. For example, everything takes longer in a pandemic classroom. In a typical school year, I can pass out a worksheet or notes paper, and the class can get working right away. But in a pandemic classroom designed without paper, just opening a worksheet on Schoology can take several minutes or more, depending on the student's ability to navigate the program or the speed of the Chromebook. I've also learned that that structure is key in a pandemic classroom. Right now, school is confusing because students have had to adapt to a whole new way of learning. Every time a change is made to a schedule, however, students get even more confused. I can't tell you how many times I've had to ask, I've had students ask for clarification on schedule of the day because they cannot remember what the current schedule is. My reflections are only those of one teacher. Imagine all the knowledge of all the teachers across the district. Why isn't that wealth of experience being tapped into when creating plans for learning? Through PNEA, I have personally experienced amazing collaboration in communication labs and contract negotiations. I have seen the faces of administrators when they hear stories from real classrooms, and I know that they appreciate that input. This type of collaboration is the norm in our district and is even part of our agreement. Yes, the decision about how to safely learn this year is hard. So why aren't we asking for input from people who really know what is happening in the classrooms? Along with the plan for second
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Jeff Chazen.
Good evening and thank you. I come to you as a graduate of Parkway North, a teacher and PNEA rep of Parkway West, and a parent of two children at Claymont. I am greatly concerned that the decisions made by Parkway and the board respectfully are failing to address the evidence of COVID within the Parkway community. The decision to go back full-time fails to recognize the obvious facts and evidence that we are still dealing with a COVID emergency. We are currently number two in the state in reported cases, which highlights the health and safety of students, teachers, and other Parkway employees continues to be in jeopardy. These largely unreported facts also concern me. Number one, that Parkway's had numerous issues finding substitute teachers to deal with the onslaught of sicknesses and quarantines. Number two, that we've had numerous issues finding custodians and other professionals to work at all of the Parkway schools, which will negatively impact cleaning and disinfecting classrooms. Number three, social distancing will be non-existent at most Parkway institutions, which violates the guidelines set out by the CDC. As the PNEA rep, I can state that several teachers are concerned and upset by the lack of voice we have as professionals in the decisions that are being made concerning COVID. Many teachers at all levels feel as though we are not being treated as stakeholders and are beginning to lose faith in the decision-making process of Parkway. We should be part of the process, and yet people who don't have to implement the plans in the classroom are the ones that are making all of the decisions. Teachers need to be in the room where decisions are being made. Teaching and learning are why we are here. Teachers want to go back to school. We want to go back and build the relationships with our students one-on-one, but we want to do it safely. We want to do it in a manner which we have no fears, just like what we want for our students. I close with this. Parkway is always challenging me as a teacher to use and analyze data from
Thank you for your comments. Next up, I have Blair Hopkins.
Hi. Evening, everyone. My name is Blair Hopkins, and I teach French and Spanish at Parkway West High School. I want to use my time to speak about concerns I have about a full-capacity return to in-person learning that I know are shared by many other teachers and staff. The CDC's website states that COVID-19 can spread easily between people who are within close contact of each other, which is defined as six feet, even if one of those people is asymptomatic. A full-capacity return would mean that six feet between students cannot be done. No classroom is large enough to do that. In district emails that we've received, we've been told that three feet is what we should try to offer students, even though that does not guarantee their safety or ours. Additionally, my classroom is pretty small. It has no windows that I can open, and it does not circulate air well. That is the case for many classrooms across the district. When I taught a class at North two years ago, I literally taught in a janitor's closet. Students would have been lucky to have two feet in that room and no air circulation. Under the plan being proposed tonight, Parkway classrooms would not be the safe places to learn that teachers and staff work so hard to create and that all parents and guardians want for their kids. Lastly, KSDK reported today that the Parkway zip codes have the highest number of active COVID cases in the St. Louis area and the second highest in Missouri. Area hospitals are at 80% capacity, ICUs are at 88% capacity. That is before the expected post-holiday spike, before the regular flu season, and before we reopen our buildings and fill them with thousands of students and teachers and staff. Teachers and staff want to be in person with their students again, but a full-time return in January is not a safe plan. So I urge the board, please go back to the drawing board, come up with something safer than this plan for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, I have Zaven Nielbandian.
Thank you for accepting me to come and deliver these comments tonight. I very much appreciate the position that the school board and the Parkway administration is in and how difficult it must be to make these types of decisions for everyone in the community. I am a Parkway resident. I am a Parkway taxpayer. I am a Parkway teacher, employee, and parent. My son is an alumni, my daughter is a junior at West High School. So my interests in the district are manifold and multifaceted, and I appreciate all the comments that those colleagues that came before me have made. I just want to ask a few questions. Why the decision so far ahead of the date in which we start? We seem to be anxious to make this decision, and I can't understand why. It doesn't really make any sense. Another question that I have is, if it is so safe to return and we are all so anxious to get back to face-to-face learning, then why is the Parkway school board still meeting in a virtual environment rather than a face-to-face environment? I guarantee you, we can find space for this meeting to occur that's much more socially distant than what my classroom can provide. In fact, the goal at my school is three feet, not six feet, because that's all we can manage with a full boat of kids. I also asked the same question my colleagues asked. Why are we not part of the decision-making process from the beginning? It doesn't make any sense. As I've asked people around the community over the last few weeks that have talked about going back to school full-time, they can't understand why the decision's being made so quickly rather than closer to when we'll actually go back to school. And like a teacher looking at a classroom, before I ask my last question, I really want to thank those of you that I can see are paying attention to me and listening to what I have to say because often I get worried that the kids that are actually in my classroom are not. These are all challenges that we have to face, and challenges in Parkway can be solved. Sickness and death cannot be solved. And when we go back to putting ourselves
Okay, thank you for your comments. Next up, I have Matthew Conley.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Conley. I'm the Health and Physical Education teacher at Claymont Elementary. In addition, I coach wrestling and football for the North High Vikings and a Parkway resident. I'm speaking tonight in support of the plan to return students to in-person learning four days a week. 2020 has been an obstacle, to say the least. Everyone has been impacted by the events of this year. The one equalizing trait this year has been sacrifice. Certainly, I acknowledge some more than others. I recognize the concerns of those who are worried about returning to school at a higher capacity. However, we cannot allow fear to be the overriding determination as how we move forward as a district. The CDC, along with the American Academy of Pediatrics, advocate for the reopening of schools to in-person learning. I presume they have concluded after examining the evidence, it is safe for our students and staff to return in-person learning. Finally, while I understand the concerns of the community and those who advocate for maintaining the hybrid model, it's important to understand our larger community and why this model isn't working. Sadly, the hybrid model, while designed with the best of intentions, creates the least amount of opportunities for learning. Responsive, many who recognize this issue facing the hybrid model would suggest we should return to the virtual learning in its place. While it's true, many students and families are doing well with the virtual model, we cannot ignore those who are not. The struggle many of our families are having with the hybrid model is in large part due to the virtual component. Doubling down would only further and hinder our students' learning outcomes. As a public entity, our role is to best impact the community and meet their needs. Our public is needing a return to in-person learning at a far higher capacity than we currently. Every community, industry, and individual has been dealt the challenge. This is no different. We must meet our community where the needs are and carry out a plan that sets our students on a path toward success. Four days of in-person instruction puts our students and community on such a path. The Emperor Marcus Aurelius in his book Meditations once said, "Look well into thyself. There is a sort of strengths which will draw always, which will always spring up if thou would always look." I hope you find the strength to pass this proposal tonight. I look forward to returning from break and hopefully on January 19th, the four days a week of in-person learning. Happy holidays and prayers, Matthew Conley. Thank you and good luck tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Apparently, I skipped one of our speakers, two speakers ago, so I will go back. That is Chakra Venkata.
Hi, my name is Chakra Venkata. I'm one of the ICU physicians here in Mercy. As a middle-school parent, you know, I could not agree more about the summary sent out by Dr. Marty regarding how the virtual learning is adversely affecting all the kids, at least the hybrid model, I should say. And I also want to say that, just like Matthew Conley pointed out, CDC and AAP and other, you know, research have shown that it is not, the schools are not the major cause of COVID outbreaks in the community compared to other, you know, activity that goes on in the community. And I think we ought to get kids to get them back to learning in the school, and I strongly, you know, request the board to approve the proposed proposal put forward by Dr. Marty. I think it's also important to, you know, formulate a plan to disrupt, I mean, to minimize the interruptions when the kids are back in the school. And I also would like to know what the school districts plan to vaccinate the teachers and staff. You know, as a healthcare worker, I was vaccinated last week, and I think we should start educating the staff and teachers to alleviate any concerns, so they feel comfortable when they come back to school. And that's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rooks will revisit the three who weren't in the queue before. Joanna Filer, she joined us.
She is here now, I will add her.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I hope that the board accepts Dr. Marty's recommendation for sending students back to in-person learning. An email was recently sent out to all Parkway West juniors, and I want to share some of this with you tonight. Ten juniors are failing all three classes. Quite honestly, I'm not sure I understand this. Five of you have two Fs and a D. Eleven of you have a combo of Ds and Fs. 24% are failing your English class, one quarter of the class. You have four years of English. Do you want to take an extra English classes your senior year or during summer school? 18% are failing math class. 26% are failing science class. 20% are failing social studies. Twenty-two kids, different students, not included in the above numbers, have had teachers email direct concerns just in the past three days about what to do and other concerns. The question is, have they fallen off the radar? I think the answer is simple to all these questions. It's virtual learning is the problem, and students need to be in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you very much. How about Nicole Graham? Has she joined us?
No, she has not.
And Lindsay Presson?
No, she has not.
Okay. I will move on then to the one statement. That is a statement that we received just a short time ago from Kemba Metropolis, who is an English teacher at Parkway Central High School. I'll attempt to monitor my own time here. It reads, "Dr. Marty, Mr. Todd, members of the Board of Education and members of the Parkway School District Community. I love teaching, I love my students, and I value every year I have taught in Parkway. I came to Parkway because I wanted to teach in the district that does everything in the best interest of students, values its staff, and works together to achieve the mission of educating as well as empowering their students. Anyone who knows me knows that I am a zealous advocate for doing what is best for my kids. I have one biological child, but now I have thousands of kids. When I first started teaching, my mentor gave me a lot of advice. She told me to treat each student as if they were my child. Apologize if I make a mistake, then try my best to mend fences and never be afraid to use my voice, especially if I am trying to make my school a better place to learn and grow for students. 2020 has been a year like we've never seen. I know we all want to do what is best for our kids next semester as we enter 2021. At the last board meeting, we learned that the board intended to implement a plan to return to school next year. I hope that we can find a better name for this plan because I know the vast majority of teachers never stopped teaching or teaching so our kids could learn, and we can have school where there are two or more gathered to seek and pursue knowledge. I am concerned there is a lack of voices from teachers, parents, and students to formulate this plan. I am concerned about having a plan we can implement to ensure consistency. I am concerned that we are not doing enough to protect everyone in our district. Schools may be the primary source of transmission, but the rate of infection and testing positive for COVID-19 is worse now than it was in March when we left the classroom with enough materials to teach through March. One of my dear friends teaches at another district and contracted COVID-19 despite wearing a mask and washing hands. In November, I attended a professional development seminar with teachers in the area. A colleague in another district broke down crime because her district began following Governor Parsons' recommendations that do not require isolations or quarantine for people in classrooms with students or teachers that tested positive for COVID-19. There's a couple more paragraphs, and I've reached the end of my two minutes for that. So I will certainly forward the rest of these comments, all the comments in your entirety, to the rest of the board. So we thank you for providing notes. There are no additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda. So we may have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the special meeting of the Board of Education. It's scheduled to come December 21st, 2020.
So move.
So move.
Second.
On favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. So we have two items on the agenda tonight. The first is to discuss the comprehensive learning plan for second semester. So I will turn it over to Dr. Marty to begin that presentation.
Well, thank you, Mr. Todd and board members. And I know a number of people who are observing the board meeting tonight. We obviously are here ahead of heading off for winter break with a comprehensive plan, which we're going to detail. We, of course, at the last board meeting, talked about the fact that our community and our, all the stakeholders really need to have some assurance and some continuity as we start the second semester as to what that semester is going to look like. We have had a first quarter that was virtual and was, for the most part, predictable and consistent. We had a second quarter that has been fairly rough, admittedly. And we want to have a second semester that is much better educationally and much better for all, all, all concerned. So plans can be made. So our effort here tonight is to lay out a comprehensive plan. Comprehensive primarily on a schedule, but comprehensive covering many other issues from health concerns, safety concerns, academics, certainly student services, and many, many topics. And Dr. Watson will lead us through some of that discussion. So we're going to go in significant detail and we're going to start by having Robin Wallen give us a bit of an update as to the current situation. We've had Robin at most of our board meetings do that, and we thought it would be appropriate again tonight for Robin to give a COVID nineteen update. And Robin will also be talking through the meeting later on, as was suggested, we'll, we'll share some information about the vaccine. Vaccine planning that she and others have been engaged in. So Robin, I'm going to turn it over to you to give us kind of the update that we again have asked of you and appreciate again your ongoing leadership that you have provided the district and the community these last few months.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. President Todd, Mrs. Hopper, Dr. Marty, members of the board, Mrs. Stover, thank you once again for taking the time to touch base with the data that is informing our decisions here in Parkway. Next slide. So one good piece of data is that although we are at levels of community spread that are more than two to three times what we experienced earlier in the pandemic, it does appear that the peak of the current wave of infection is leveling off and decreasing slightly. The graph provided by the St. Louis County Department of Public Health depicts that here. Next slide. We can also see a very similar picture when looking specifically at the data for the zip codes in our, in our footprint here in Parkway. This is a view from the data that is on our dashboard today. And you can also appreciate the recent downward trend, although we're still at very much in the high spread region of the graph. Next slide. Evaluation of the summary of key indicators is mixed. We still have a transmission rate above one at one point oh five. This was as of Friday. And a positivity rate of sixteen point one percent. The seven day average rate of new cases is still very high at sixty-three point five one per one hundred thousand in St. Louis County. This means that the rates of community spread are still significantly elevated and cases continue to increase. Here on this slide, we see the state data that once again, looking at school age youth in St. Louis County on the left and all ages together on the right, and that graph on the right is a little bit compressed. So the, a really important note is that the student data, the youth data is actually falling towards the bottom of that undisaggregated graph there. Youth continue to have the lowest rates of infection and, but they are still significantly higher for all three age ranges than they were earlier in the pandemic. The state of Missouri collects data on positive COVID tests by address and reports the tolls for youth that live in an address in the Parkway School District geographic area. I've shared this information with you in the past. They are now reporting that there have been a cumulative eight hundred and seventy-five cases of COVID nineteen in school age youth in our district's boundaries. You can also see here the numbers disaggregated by age and the percentage of the toll that have occurred in the previous two-week period. And those percentages have fallen for ten to fourteen-year-olds and fifteen to nineteen-year-olds and risen slightly for five to nine-year-olds. Some of you may have seen the article that KSDK published today, and it was mentioned by some of our speakers earlier, noting that Parkway has the second highest rates of COVID nineteen in school age youth in the state. And while we do have very high rates, there are some significant data nuances that the article, I believe, did not adequately address. The article was taking this, the same data that you see in front of us and looking at youth that live in our school district and comparing it to other school districts throughout the state. We know that in Parkway, there are several thousand private school students who live in our geographic area, and they would be included in this number. Another problem with the data is that the comparison does not take into consideration the size of the school districts. So it's comparing raw numbers and not percentages. And one more thing that could be influencing the numbers are the percentage of families in some areas that may be opting out of testing so that there may actually be high levels of infection, but they're not measuring them with positive tests. So there's likely areas throughout the state where, where youth with mild symptoms may not be being tested. So I'm not, I, I really believe that there's many areas throughout the state that have similar rates of infection to Parkway, but our numbers may actually be a bit more accurate. Next slide. So this is today's active cases in Parkway. We currently have fourteen students and seventeen staff members who are positive for COVID nineteen and additional two hundred and thirty-four individuals who are in quarantine. We've seen a drop in the numbers of positive cases and quarantines since secondary students returned to distance learning, which most likely helps to explain some of the decline as we do not know about the cases, all of the cases in this age group since they are at home at this time. So I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Watson and we'll talk more in a little bit about mitigation.
Thank you, Dr. Wallen. If you would advance to the next slide. So before we begin talking about second semester, we just want to make sure everyone knows about the plans as we finish first semester. Nothing has changed, so this is just a review. Our students have one more day of school tomorrow before winter break. Classes resume on January fifth with January fifth and sixth as distance learning days. On January seventh, elementary students will return to our buildings and continue our blended schedule through the rest of the semester. Our secondary students will pick up with distance learning after winter break. So that just is a quick summary of the time that we have remaining for first semester. Wanted to make sure we're all on the same page with that. At this time, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Marty to talk a little bit about the recommendation. Dr. Marty?
Thank you, Dr. Watson and Dr. Wallen. Thank you. So again, we're going to work through in detail here a comprehensive learning plan for second semester. And we're going to, Nikki, if you want to just advance something, the next, we're going to put up the recommendation. You'll, we'll come back to it a little bit later, but want to put it up front. So our recommendation is to approve a comprehensive second semester delivery of instruction, which begins on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. That includes students having five days of live instruction per week with a minimum of four in-person days per week as his calendar, school calendar allows. Now, we'll detail this in a little bit more as we get into the discussion. But the third quarter has a number of weeks that has a couple of holidays, some PD days. But the weeks that would not include that would include, and we would have five of those, what we would call distant learning, a distant learning day. So we would have, every week would have full instruct, in-person live instruction, meaning that the distant learning would be live instruction. So we'll talk more about that in detail and talk a little bit more about the calendar as we get into the details. So again, this is the recommendation. We'll circle back around at the end to, before we open it up for board discussion. But this is just putting it up front. This is our recommendation to the board. Five days of live instruction, again, four in-person days. As and then either, of course, we'd have some holidays in there, non-school days. But the weeks that don't include that would be distant learning time. And we'd have five of those in the third quarter, I believe, seven in the fourth quarter. We want to, as we have indicated in our discussion, have this meeting tonight so that families and all stakeholders, staff members as well, begin, can begin planning for the second semester. We know that again, it's been a rough goal and we think our families definitely need to have some time to plan effectively for the schedule that we're proposing here tonight for the beginning of the second semester on, on January nineteenth. So I'm going to hand it back to Dr. Watson, who's going to take us through, again, in some detail. Again, we're going to talk a little bit about the health and safety. We're going to talk about curriculum needs, student services. Robin's going to talk again about the plans for the vaccine. And we'll wrap this up again with the board certainly asking, participating in discussion. But Dr. Watson, thank you again for your organization here, putting this all together for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. Thank you. Okay, so here are components, some of the components of our pandemic response plan. In each phase of our work, we have continued to refer back to Parkway's pandemic response plan. All areas of our district thought about what we should be doing during this global pandemic and noted specific actions. As we plan for second semester, we have and we will continue referring to our plan to make sure that we are covering all bases. As Dr. Marty said, the recommendation is to get our kids back in school. The last time we met, I referenced our learning plan. If you note the arrow, the recommendation will place us somewhat in between learning plan A and learning plan B. We are moving away from the blended model to get students back in school more frequently. What will occur is all students, as previously stated, will have live instruction each school day that we're in session. We've heard from many constituents. We've heard from students, parents, operation staff, certified staff, our educators, and a few parents of teachers through various means, emails, phone calls, most recently our thought exchange. As you know, our thought exchange provided the opportunity for all employees, parents, and secondary students to share what was working well and to share challenges. One of the things we did this time with thought exchange was provide different links for the various groups of staff, parents, and students. This really gave us a good picture of the feedback from the various groups, certified operations, middle school students, parents and staff, high school students, parents and staff, and elementary students, parents and staff. So we were able to look at the common themes and help us kind of determine some aspects of our plan as we move forward. That provided some great input. In addition, we have ongoing dialogue and exchanges with Parkway's National Education Association president, who represents our certified teachers. And we, we had, we heard from Pat McPartland this evening. He has shared survey data and responses from his members on a couple of occasions and frequently asks questions and seeks clarification on behalf of his members. And we respond to him based on the information and questions that he requests from us. In addition, we have provided him opportunities to give input and feedback at times prior to others seeing the information. This has been very helpful as we collaborate with him as he represents his members, the teachers. While hearing all of these voices, we have also continued reviewing data trends in St. Louis County, including our own Parkway numbers and other school districts in our area. So in bringing you this proposal, we have considered many thoughts, many rationales, justifications, and needs. Specifically, we have focused on health and safety, student learning, and the social emotional well-being of our students. Knowing that our mission is ensuring all of our students are capable, confident, curious, and capable, in the wrong order. Not being that we are not focusing on the adults, we certainly are. And that's why that thought exchange and the conversations with Mr. McPartland are so crucially important to us. So as we think about moving forward and our focus, we're going to begin with Dr. Beckner. He is going to share some data points on how students are doing academically. As we have been talking about, why we need to consider moving back to bringing our students in person. Following Dr. Beckner, you will hear Dr. Matheson share some information regarding our students' mental health. Dr. Beckner?
Thank you very much, Dr. Watson, and I want to review some of our data points that we have previously looked at with the board, but just to make sure that we all have the same context. We'll be looking specifically at both grade data and some of our benchmark assessment data. We'll start with some of our grade data for our high school students, comparing first quarter grades to first semester grades from last year, both of which represent a full course worth of learning. As you see our grades here, we have seen a decrease in our passing percentage. Now, at the end of first quarter, being ninety-four percent for this school year compared to ninety-six point five percent. The previous school year, we know that grades fluctuate much during the course of a term. So we really look at end of term grades once all assignments have been turned in, exams have been completed, and grades have been submitted. And so this is our cleanest comparison. Also look at by grade level. So we'll start with freshmen. And freshmen historically in Parkway and across the nation have the highest percent of failures of any grade. That is certainly true in Parkway and true again this year where our freshman class is approaching ninety-two percent passing rate compared to the ninety-four percent overall. Our sophomores fare slightly better at five point eight percent of grades coming in as non-passing grades, up slightly from last year. Juniors, we see something very similar. And our seniors have actually the highest passing rate of all of our classes. And but there we see it is fairly consistent across the board that we are seeing a slight increase in our number of students overall who have Ds and Fs compared to previous school years. Certainly not dramatic, but for those students, that certainly has a very real impact. And a story we've been telling over and over again is that many of our students who were doing well prior to the pandemic continue to do well. But we know that there is another group of students who is really struggling quite a bit. This is the number of our students for the last two years with no failing grades. And we see that that number has barely moved, yet our number of students or the number of failing grades we have has increased. What this tells us is that students who were struggling prior to the pandemic continue to struggle and in many cases are struggling more as a result of all the challenges that learning during the pandemic has brought. Next, we'll look at some of our benchmark assessment data. Our second grade data is probably the least comparable of the grade levels. We do see a slight increase there, but we've had to remove some items that were difficult to deliver online. So second grade potentially is the least comparable. But overall, here we see second grade, third grade, and then we can also see fourth and fifth grade in ELA. And what we see is a general trend where we do see somewhere between a two and five percent decline of the percent proficient, which is really the number we're looking at here, what percent of students would score proficient on these exams. So ELA slight decline between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And then in math, we do have our end of unit assessments. And here we see a similar story as in ELA. We see slight declines in our overall proficiency rate and student scores on these standardized exams. Here we see K one, two, and then we can also see grades three, four, and five. And in many grades, we see again a very similar story where we are seeing. And in many grades, we see again a very similar story where we are seeing a group of students who maybe previously were proficient, no longer scoring at that proficient level. Certainly, we would, if we had described our situation prior to the pandemic and asked how it would impact students and their academic performance, we probably would have predicted much more significant declines. But nonetheless, we need to acknowledge the reality that we are seeing some of these declines in both our ELA and math and math scores. And and those are things that we will are addressing and are going to continue to address as we move forward. The other challenge with some of these scores is we know that test scores do not tell the whole story, that there's an entire other part of students' lives that is not reflected in our performance and academic scores. And that's students' mental health and well-being. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Matheson to speak about that.
Thank you, Dr. Beckner. We go to the next slide. So as as you've heard before, we are concerned with the social, emotional, and mental health of our students and staff. Many of our students are missing the relationships, social connections, and community our schools provide. We know that mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. It affects how we think, feel, and act. It also helps determine how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. We know that our schools provide a sense of community with relationships and social connections at its core. This sense of loss has been overwhelming for some of our students. We also know students' mental health impacts student achievement, and we want all of our students to be well. Our staff has done, certainly has been doing their best to help our students stay connected and provide the supports needed. Our team has completed countless social distance home visits, phone calls, emails, as well as found creative ways to help build community via lunch bunches, before-after-school groups, found additional supports via progress monitoring teams, engaging our teachers and teachers through community for more intense needs, they've connected families to outside therapy and supports. Our team continues to reach out to families in multiple ways, including the needs assessment that went out in August, as well as the most recent needs assessment that was sent to our students and families in December. That assessment was sent to all parents K through 12 and all students 6 through 12. Students in middle school completed the survey during PE classes. Our counselors and social workers have worked very hard to respond to all of the students or families that stated they had needs. This has been a huge task, and our team has responded to the challenge to ensure a connection has been made. While our team has worked diligently to connect with kids and families in the blended model, the distance learning model, or the virtual academy, we know being back in school full-time for many of our families will enhance the mental health of our students. Our team will continue to engage our families and students who choose to remain in the virtual setting while supporting those who have chosen in-person learning. The mental health of our students is essential.
Thank you, Dr. Beckner and Dr. Matheson. So as we plan for second semester and the potential of all students returning to our buildings, there were many aspects of schooling that were discussed. This slide touches on some of them, and these are the components that we will review with you tonight. We understand that students, educators, and families need predictable and consistent routines. Pending board approval, all students who are registered for in-person learning will return to school on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Our students who are enrolled in virtual campus will continue as they have been doing. Preschool classes will continue to be open every day students are enrolled. And students will have live learning with their teachers five days a week when we do not have scheduled days off, records days, professional development, federal holidays. At times, students will be engaged in distance learning second semester. As I mentioned this, please note that the vast majority of the time during second semester, students will be engaged in in-person learning. Having some distance learning days in our schedule provides the following opportunities. One, these days will be utilized as deep cleaning days for our classrooms and schools. We are committed to additional cleaning, disinfecting, and sanitizing of our classrooms and schools frequently throughout the day and week. But this day allows time for our custodians to do a deeper clean of the entire building. Distance learning days will also be allowed, will allow time for contact tracing from the weekend to ensure that any weekend activities or illnesses are investigated and the contact tracing process is complete before students and staff return to our school. Our contact tracers are busy all of the time. But what we have noticed, weekends and Mondays are especially busy days. And if we can avoid possible exposure, we want to do so. And as you already know, contact tracing investigations and any quarantines are directed by St. Louis County Health Department. At the high school level, distance learning days allow for a later start time in the morning for students. This decision was based on significant feedback from our students and teachers via the thought exchange. As you will note, Parkway's distance learning days are not on the schedule every week. For example, I think Dr. Marty already mentioned there are five distance learning days scheduled for third quarter. These days will be scheduled for Mondays, but not every Monday. So it will be very important to pay close attention to the calendar. The next few slides show the schedule for the rest of second semester. So you will be able to see what our weeks look like. So on this slide, you see a couple of weeks. And then if we go to the next slide, you will see February and what the schedule will look like. The next slide is March. And then April. And the last slide, you will see May and June. So again, not all Mondays consist of distance learning days. Thus, if we move forward, it will be key for families to make note of those dates. So at this time, Dr. Wallen is going to return to discuss mitigation protocols and strategies.
Great, thank you. I've shared with you previously the importance of mitigation strategies and how the key to success of these efforts is actually the layering of these multiple strategies. It's not just one activity that makes a big impact, but rather the combination of multiple strategies simultaneously. So we have and we will continue to layer our infection control efforts. We'll provide healthy behaviors throughout through daily health screenings, encouraging students and staff to stay home if they're sick, and implementing the isolation and quarantine protocols under the guidance of the St. Louis County Department of Public Health, which is currently 14 days quarantine, unlike a lot of the areas in our state. So we are not following the the state's guidance on that, but rather our health department and the CDC's guidance. Hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette will continue to be critical and will have time built into our school days to address hand washing. And certainly in those locations where soap and water is not readily available, hand sanitizer will be made available for students and staff. And as you're aware, we also will ensure that everyone in our buildings continues to wear a cloth-based covering all day, every day. And honestly, the strategy is going really well. We'll continue to institute more rigorous cleaning and disinfection protocols, as Dr. Watson mentioned, and will strive to maintain physical distancing when possible, although we are acknowledging that this is harder in full classrooms. And for in some locations, we'll be providing physical barriers such as Plexiglas where close contact between individuals is likely. I want to share with you the measures and data that support our belief that our mitigation strategies are helping to prevent the spread of COVID-19 in our schools. So let me just first mention some of these measures that we're using to control transmission. When we look at the measures we have in place, it's helpful to realize that most of the effective measures, the most, I'm sorry, the most effective measures are engineering controls. Because what engineering controls do is they isolate people from the virus. So some of the engineering controls that we have in place are marking distances on pavement and flooring. If you've been in our schools, you've probably seen the green circles outside of our buildings. So these these measurements are engineering controls that have been shown to be very effective. We have hallway and stair directional markings to encourage the flow of traffic in one direction. We have designated isolation spaces for sick individuals, new HVAC filters to help filter the air, and then the physical barriers that I mentioned before. We also, though, have administrative controls. And what administrative controls do is they change the way people work. So some of our administrative controls include the controlling pedestrian pathways and and changing the behavior of the way people walk, limiting visitors, cohorting students in smaller groups, the hand hygiene that I mentioned before, limiting the length of close contact, being very mindful of the amount of time that we're spending close to one another, the mask requirement, which I mentioned before, and health screenings, all examples of administrative controls. Let's take a one final look at transmission in our schools. So this this slide looks at the numbers of Parkway students who've been quarantined due to close contact with someone with COVID-19 or isolated due to a personal COVID-19 infection. The red bar represents the exposures that happened inside the school setting and the blue, the exposures that happened outside in the community. We see here that while 56% of the student quarantines happened as a result of an exposure in the school setting, only 9% or 29% of the students who were positive could be linked to an exposure inside Parkway. And the majority of these exposures actually happened in athletics and not in the classroom. Let's look at the next slide also. This slide looks at the numbers of staff members who've been quarantined or who have developed COVID-19 from a possible exposure inside the school setting versus outside the school setting in the community. Here we see similar findings to the students where the majority of the positive cases are attributed to exposure outside of work. We see that 45% of the staff were quarantined as a result of an exposure at work, and 12% of the positive staff members had a link to a work-related exposure. The majority of staff COVID cases that happened as a result of an exposure at work happened because of close contact with coworkers rather than students. Next slide. It appears from our data that we've created environments that are safe to learn and work in and that our mitigation strategies are working. Other school districts have successfully, who have successfully returned students to in-person learning have implemented similar mitigation measures in their districts. We believe that the layering of the mitigation strategies that we have in place have helped to decrease the incidence of infection in our schools. A new report by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention of a study of 400 Mississippi schools confirmed the finding that community and close contact exposures contribute to the spread of COVID-19. Among children and adolescents less than 18 years of age in the study, close contact with persons with COVID-19 and gatherings with persons outside of the household and lack of consistent mask use in school were associated with COVID-19. Whereas attending school or childcare was not associated with receiving positive test results. As we plan for second semester, implementing these layered mitigation strategies will continue to help us and be very important in our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Wallen. In as part of our pandemic response plan, we have a school operations plan, which we have talked about throughout the months. To the best of our ability, we will continue to maximize space, only adding the needed desks and seats needed for the additional students in our classrooms. We will continue to limit the number of students in restrooms, limit sharing. Students should be utilizing their own materials. We will encourage personal water bottles because our water fountains will remain closed, but the bottled fillers will serve available. We will continue hosting virtual events, field trips, parent guardian meetings. We will restrict gatherings to the ability in communal areas. And we will continue to implement enhanced lunch protocols. So again, the things that we've been doing, we will continue doing. We know that they will look different with the number of students in schools. But what I know is our staff will do the very best they can each and every day as we think about all of those details that we need to attend to throughout the school day. Next, I am going to turn it over to Dr. Beckner to talk about student attendance.
Well, thank you very much. And we do have some challenges ahead of us with student attendance, particularly as we return with students in class more frequently. This first chart, actually, the first challenge is really what we've been talking about, which is quarantines are part of our reality. As Dr. Wallen has told us, they're an important mitigation strategy. They're a way to identify people who either have been in close contact or themselves have developed symptoms of COVID-19. And because of that, quarantines will be with us when we return. In fact, they've been with us. This first chart shows group one and group two when we were in the hybrid model of students attending either Tuesday, Thursday, or Wednesday, Friday. The green represents group one, and the number you see is the number of days students just in that group have missed due to quarantine or isolation. And the blue is group two and the number of days they've missed. For each group, each group has missed cumulatively over 1,100 student days. And we also see the precipitous drop once our secondary schools return to distance learning, which is why you see the bigger numbers in November and then certainly dropping off. As we return and continue, this is going to continue to be part of our reality. And that's going to be one of the challenges posed to us as we move forward. There is a second challenge as well, and that's that our virtual campus is currently at capacity. And we have had more requests for people to move into virtual campus than we have spots for them. Those two realities combined mean that we will have to deal with the fact that students will be learning. Some students will need to continue learning from home once we return in this plan, simply because they're either for some reason in their family, which might be a valid reason that they do not feel comfortable returning, or because they themselves are quarantined or a loved one is quarantined and they decide to stay home. So how will we deal with that? For secondary schools, the reality is the practice of having students zoom into the class while other students are present is going to be with us. We need to acknowledge that this is a difficult reality of COVID and returning students to school is there will be those students who are not able to attend in person. And depending on the length of those quarantines, that could mean an extended separation from the curriculum and the content of the class and the student while they're dealing with those quarantines. We also need to just recognize it's going to be a challenge for our teachers. And we certainly need, we need grace and support and to recognize that trying to educate students in two different settings simultaneously is the most difficult of the three options that we have. As we enter that, we already lived with it briefly when students were in school. To live with that now, heading into second semester, it's just going to be a challenge. And it's one that I know our teachers will rise to the occasion on, but that certainly doesn't make it easy. So we ask for your patience and understanding as we navigate that new reality and continue to get better at educating students in two settings at the same time. It should be noted, however, with not having group one and group two students, there will be fewer students who are learning from home simultaneously as there are students in the classroom. Previously in November, many teachers focused on their students who were at home because that group often made up the majority of their students, and that made sense. As we head into post-January 19th, should the board approve this model, we should expect that to shift where there's more focus on the in-person students as the majority of students will be in the classroom at that time. In elementary, the practice of zooming students in is particularly challenging for many reasons, largely because of the age appropriateness of the children zooming in, their ability to focus. So we still will have students joining morning meetings or community circles, depending what they're called in various schools, so they can continue to be connected to their classmates. But we will be recording each of our mini lessons in reading, writing, and math so that our students who are in quarantine can continue their learning, can have instruction from a Parkway teacher, but not have to rigorously monitor. but not have to rigorously monitor their day and the times that they might have to join a class live via Zoom. We'll also have workloads, learning activities, and all kinds of other engagement things for students to do via Schoology, both for specials classes, which includes art, music, and PE, and for social studies and science, so that students who are quarantined can continue their learning. This slide shows the percent of our in-person students who have been in attendance on the days that we have been present. So I noted earlier that in many cases in our secondary schools, the majority of students were learning from home. If 50% of our in-person students were in Group One, who was supposed to be in school, you can see from the high school line that in many cases, 20, 30, approaching 40% of our students who were supposed to be in person were choosing not to attend. That's going to, again, be a challenge and something we're going to work to remedy because if students have chosen an in-person learning experience, we want them to enjoy the benefits of that in-person learning experience. So to problem solve student absences, both that and just other regular student absences, we are going to be working to limit students' need to participate via Zoom, and we'll be doing that by analyzing our class sizes to accommodate requests. I noted earlier, we've had far more requests for students to move into virtual campus than we have capacity, but we'll be trying to analyze and see what requests potentially to move back in person we can accommodate, depending on our class sizes and certainly honoring our class max, class max numbers. We'll be trying to identify those students who are attending virtually by choice, and by choice, we mean not because they maybe have an at-risk family member, not because the family doesn't feel safe, but we don't want high school students in particular just waking up one day saying, "I don't feel like coming," and attending via Zoom. We really want them, again, to enjoy the benefits of learning in person from their teacher. So we will be rolling out some new processes around that to try to limit that to where it really is truly only our students who are quarantined and our students who have made an official request to get into virtual campus, but were unable to, who would be participating via Zoom. Dr. Matheson also has a team working to increase engagement and attendance for all learners. This is led by Michael Barilak and Dr. Matheson's department, and includes social workers, counselors, really looking at all aspects of what we might need to do to engage our learners, not just have them attend, but how do we have them meaningfully engaged in learning, particularly during this time when we know engagement can be more challenging because there are more barriers to students' engagement and attendance. So those are things we'll continue to work on for problem-solving student attendance. And we know that student attendance is only one part of the challenge we're going to face. We also have to deal with staff attendance. So we'll now turn it over to, I believe, Dr. Watson to talk about staff attendance.
So as we've said, we expect quarantines to continue. We know that we will continue to have staff members who are not able to come to work. This is just a reality of where we are. When kids return to school in October, we identified two permanent substitutes for our secondary schools and one for each of our elementary schools. When secondary students returned to distance learning, we were able to add an additional permanent substitute to our elementary schools, and this proved to be very helpful. As we plan for the possibility of all students returning, the permanent substitutes will return to the secondary schools, and we will also maintain two substitutes at the elementary school. Having these permanent subs are most ideal to cover when teachers have to leave during the day for one reason or another. Maybe they're not feeling well, or they receive a call telling them they must quarantine based on a close contact. In addition, when we cannot get the substitute teacher from the company that we utilize, we have individuals already in our building who know structures and systems that can go and take care of our students. So as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, we continue to revisit decisions and make revisions when appropriate, and this is just another example of something we're going to revise based on learning, how valuable it is, especially at our elementary level, where we started off with one sub. We will now implement two. As we move on, I'm going to talk next about bus transportation and athletics activities and clubs. Our bus transportation department, our transportation department, will be updating routes based on the preferences most recently shared by families regarding their need for bus transportation when they identify in-person learning or virtual campus. If a family now needs transportation for second semester, and they currently don't have it, they should contact the Parkway Transportation Department as soon as possible, pending the decision that you all make this evening. If moving forward, all requests received prior to January 12th will be accommodated for the first day of second semester. After this, any requests received by Wednesday of any given week will go into effect the following Tuesday. This allows the routes to change, which don't happen overnight, our bus drivers to reassign seats because our bus drivers maintain a seating chart and document who was on the bus every day. We must do that in case of the need of contact tracing. So this allows our transportation department to take care of the needs that they have to help with our safety protocols. Activities, athletics activities and clubs. During the fall, our high school athletic teams and some of our high school activities met on campus. During this time, we were able to run the late bus for students who needed transportation. At this time, our winter sports teams are meeting after school, and some of our student activities are also meeting. Our activity sponsors have worked with our school athletic directors and directly with students to determine the structure that best fits their objective. Many of our activities began meeting virtually and, for example, planned for virtual performances. Thus, they continued in this structure as this process best met their intended outcome. Based on the number of drivers we have and the routes that we have created district-wide to create as much social distancing as possible on our buses, we have not been able to provide after-school activity buses for our middle school students and our high school students, thus impacting the middle school after-school activities and our high school clubs. Some of our middle school after-school activities and high school clubs have been meeting virtually, and we certainly will encourage that to continue. So please know that as I talk about athletics just a little bit and activities and clubs, that circumstances do vary at each school based on students and based on staff. So if families have any questions regarding high school athletics and secondary activities and clubs, I urge you to contact the building principal or the athletic directors at our high schools. We hit the next slide. Again, the goal, as always, since we have been in this global pandemic, is to maintain consistency. And so Dr. Marty talked about that consistency at the beginning of the presentation. But as we move forward, we want to focus again on maintaining consistency for the second half of our school year. But we have all acknowledged that we will be faced with challenges. We've been asked about closures for second semester and what that might look like, and what does that mean? Once we begin with all students in school, our plan is to do our very best to keep schools open, but we might have to close a school at some point. Why? If we have increasing numbers of COVID-19 in the school or quarantines that prohibit the day-to-day operations, we will consider closing a school for a period of time. So please be assured that we will monitor conditions closely at each school and address any issues with immediate action in the best interest of students and staff. We do encourage families to be prepared. Families need to be prepared in the case of a school closure. We do not necessarily have much lead time when following our health and safety measures, specifically when we have to quarantine staff. Families must be prepared if they receive a call during the day or evening that a school will be closed the following day, poss- and possibly up to 14 days. If school has to be closed, students will immediately be engaged in distance learning the following day. As always, we will continue to do our very best to ensure the health and safety of all students and staff and maintain a quality teaching and learning program. At this point, Dr. Wallen, talk about something that's exciting, I know, to all of us as we are all looking forward to a vaccine coming to a school near us. Dr. Wallen?
Thank you. I talked earlier about those administrative controls that we have in place and about the engineering controls, but the the most effective control is elimination, and it's very exciting to be able to see a vaccine on the horizon that we will have access to and we can begin to plan for the end of this pandemic. So we are in the in very active process of planning for what vaccine distribution might look like for our staff in Parkway. There's a lot of unknown factors right now, but a lot of of discussion on many different levels to try and find where where we will be able to access vaccine, how we might be able to ensure that our staff are vaccinated. So we're working very, very hard on that access question, and and our hope is to be able to follow the guidelines of the state and be able to provide vaccine in some form for our staff in February and March. So we're, that's the, that's the hope right now, and it's, it does, it does give it a totally different spin to this situation that has felt hopeless for so long. The the thing that we are engaging in very actively right now is educating our staff and families about the vaccine because we very, very much want people to be able to take this. We want to create immunity in our community so that the next school year will will not be as difficult as this one has been. So there will be more information coming in the coming weeks and months, and I really look forward to being a part of the solution as we move forward.
Sorry. So moving forward, what does this mean? What might this look like? Well, of course, we will continue to maintain the dashboard, and we will continue to make sure that data is accurate and up to date. As you would expect, and Dr. Wallen talked about this, if you're looking at the dashboard, things look different since our secondary students have been in distance learning. Those numbers have certainly dropped. We will be publishing frequently asked questions. So continue to look at the Parkway website, and we will push some of those frequently asked questions out to our community. And we encourage you to ask questions so we can answer them as we continue throughout second semester. We also ask us all to be accountable. Accountability means shared responsibility, and we all must do our best to be accountable to each other, which means we have to take care of one another. We have to ensure that our activities and our behavior outside of school are safe and that they contribute to the success of our students and our staff. We recognize that there's fear in our community, among all of us, fear of the unknown, and we know it's real. And we are going to do our very best to support students, staff, and parents. Thus, it is so crucial that we are all accountable to each other if we want to bring our kids back and serve them the way we know how to. I will add, if families or staff members are unsure of what being accountable might look like during the holidays, the CDC has posted two documents on their websites to help all of us understand the safest ways to celebrate the winter holidays. With that, I am going to turn it back over to Dr. Marty.
Thank you, Dr. Watson, and Dr. Wallen, and Dr. Beckner, Dr. Matheson. Once again, here is our recommendation. We firmly believe that we have addressed as much, and we know that when we use the word comprehensive, there's a lot that can be included, but I I hope that we have included in more detail than than what we certainly had at the board meeting a couple of weeks ago. We've certainly been working diligently, as you can see, and Dr. Watson, thank you again for organizing all this. We will continually, obviously, have more issues and topics come up. As Dr. Watson said, we'll continually add that to lists of questions. Our principals, so we'll be communicating with families, obviously, with great detail as well. We actually have a meeting tomorrow with our principals to make sure that that communication will be starting after the board's decision here, and we'll be in a, be continued. So we'll have information certainly from the district, but also our schools will also be providing information to our families. As I've said in past meetings, you know, we have had two goals to ensure health and safety for all students and staff and maintain a quality teaching and learning experience. As I have said the last couple of board meetings, it's not choosing one or the other. We can do both. And Dr. Wallen shared that our mitigation work has been been good, as other school districts also have reported. It certainly, the spread of the schools is not as significant as it is in the community. Certainly, we do have quarantine, we do have certainly students who and staff who have been impacted, but as the CDC has and others have said, schools are generally pretty safe places. And we think our mitigation work and what we're going to continue to do and double down, we'll continually make that a very, very high priority. But having students back, and you saw some of the data, both academically and the social emotional needs of our students. While we've had students be successful, we've had a number of students who have not been successful. We had students with IEPs who have have really need to be back in person, students with English language learning, certainly some other needs of of learning that really need to be addressed only with in-person learning. So board members, Mr. Todd, board members, we'll open it up for you to now, you know, ask any questions for us to fill in with any anything that wants clarity or information that we can provide for you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate all the the time and effort that went into preparing that. I know some of the other board members have a number of questions they'd like to ask. I'd like to start off by asking something that was addressed by a number of the teachers that spoke earlier tonight, and that is the the point of teacher input into this plan and in and into plans thus far this school year. We know, the board members know, from working with the PNEA in contract negotiation years, there's, you know, we, during those times, we hear about the the different methods and and opportunities that teachers have to work with administrators to develop curriculum and and talk about how to deliver that effectively. But we're hearing tonight, and we've heard through some emails in the past few days, that teachers haven't had a whole lot, if any, input into either this plan or or some of the plans this fall. So I guess, Dr. Marty or Dr. Watson, if either of you could speak to to those circumstances and have they, have they had enough opportunities? Have they not had enough opportunities? What are we going to do to ensure that that they're part of the conversation as as much as they should be? That uh they're part of the conversation is i- as much as they should be um going forward.
Well, I will I will start. I'm going to turn it over. I think both Dr. Watson, Dr. Becker can can highlight some of the work that has been. Um, Dr. Watson will talk a little bit about the work that a lot of our principals and Dr. Becker with coordinators working with groups of teachers. Um, uh, first of all, we value our teachers. Uh, they're they have carried the burden of uh of of this work. And we certainly value them and I certainly understand some of their frustration. Uh, but we certainly have tried our best to involve them, uh, get feedback from them. We've had key communicators. Um, sessions to get feedback. We've had other thought exchanges we indicated and respond and have responded, as you heard tonight, responded. With some um so schedule changes uh from feedback. Uh, some schedules uh relative to the high school schedule from the thought exchange as well as. Um, you know, some other things we're learning about, you know, the ineffectiveness of blended learning uh generally. So uh we will listen to that, but the Dr. Watson, Dr. Becker can tell you uh that um in their work. Uh, whether it was through point where the coordinators again, working with teachers. Um, and plan and planning at the different levels, uh, the various coordinators that Dr. Becker works with or our principals. Uh, working with staff members, calling stud leaders together. Um, so Chelsea or Kevin, you wanna?
I'll jump in. So you know, this summer, we, I think it was summer, June, maybe July, I can't remember. Um, we had a a task force to really look at what it would look like to begin school. And so we met by levels. Uh, we had administrators um and teachers. Um, coaches, I I can't remember the the list of individuals that were on that on that team. But we had quite a few teachers for from each level when we started off. Have we pulled and 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 I think the middle school group met. Probably a month later because we had some questions that um really needed to be tackled by middle school. Have we pulled that group together uh since that time? No, no, we have not. Have we had a large committee, a large group to to give feedback, to ask questions specifically about this plan? No, we have not. Um, I think I referenced earlier in my in my comments that we have. Truly depended on Pat McPartland to be the voice of the teachers that he represents. I really don't think and and he'll have to speak for himself at some point that he hesitates in asking us questions. Um, uh, just most recently responded to a number of questions, seven and a half pages of uh text from the team. Providing answers. Uh, we want to provide the answers because we know. That when he asks us questions, he is asking us questions on behalf of his membership. Um, I know sometimes he shares uh information with this membership uh to get. Input and feedback and questions that then come back to us. And so we have relied mostly. On that, in addition to our building leaders are with our teachers every single day. And I truly believe that our building leaders advocate for their teachers based on the many conversations that we have. And when we're going through things, we will sometimes ask, I I pulled a group of elementary teachers, uh, elementary principals together other the other day. What do you think teachers would think of this? Give me your feedback based on what's going on in your buildings. How are your teachers? How, you know, we're specifically talking about quarantining, you know, how are your teachers handling this? What would they think about this? And so we know our principals work with our teachers every day, and so we have sought input in that in in that way through our teachers. There have been times throughout the semester. That our secondary principals, our high school principals most often will have conversations with us. They will then take some information to their building leadership team. And then come back to us with that input in regards to their feedback or their comments. Regarding specific things that we want to move forward with. Um, as far maybe as I'm trying to think of an example, uh, schedule. That's one example of things that our high school principals are one item that they have taken to their building leadership team and then. Brought back to us to get input. I think I will then turn it over to Kevin to see if he has anything to add because I lost my next thought. Kevin?
I certainly echo how much we value our teachers and um. You know, speaking specifically of the work of TLA and the coordinators, our our coordinators are called coordinators often because they are coordinating the work of teachers. Like that is a large part of what they're doing. They're gathering teams together, they're facilitating conversation, they're trying to bring people to consensus. And because of that reality, we often work really eight eight months to two years ahead of time. In many cases to make decisions. So for example, just last week. Um, met with a group of teachers known as the virtual advisory to try to get feedback about how our virtual campus should look next school year. So we're talking about work that is six plus months ahead of time. The reality of the pandemic is oftentimes. We don't have that kind of time to bring that number of groups together and have that type of conversation. Though we'd like to, because that's how we like to work in Parkway. We like to collaborate. We'd like to bring groups together. We like to have those conversations. We like to reach consensus. So I think some of the frustration our teachers are feeling is um, we haven't been able to have processes like that. Now, Dr. Watson is exactly right. We're getting feedback from principals and asking them, tell them, get get input from your department leaders, get input from your your PLC leaders. Um, and then come back and tell us what we need to know, um, because the timelines under which the pandemic has required us to operate. That's in in many cases, the degree to which we're able to facilitate some of those feedback conversations. Um, so everything that Dr. Marty and Dr. Watson said was absolutely right. We've been trying to. To do those things to get feedback to rely on the PNEA and their leadership. Um, but the truth and and just reality of the pandemic is those typical ways that we like to operate in Parkway. A lot of them haven't been possible, just given the reality of the pandemic and certainly. And that does not mean we don't value our teachers. That doesn't mean we don't hold them in the highest esteem. And it just simply is a recognition of this is our reality. And certainly I would presume that once um we are to a more stable state. That will return to that sense of strong collaboration, you know, frequent um working months and often years into the future. Uh, to try to come to consensus, ensure that we have that kind of input and voice. So I think that's the kind of district that uh we have been and the kind of district that we strive to be.
Dr. Becker, thank you. And and what I had, what I forgot is triage. And so you you pointed up. You you mentioned it. We have been doing things quickly and I talked to the board uh the board. Uh, during the workshop and I've also talked to our principals about kind of the mode we've been in since March. We have been triaging. We have been looking at situations and trying to answer questions as quickly as possible. And move forward, you know, as as we were here two weeks ago, um, two weeks ago, was that the ninth when we were here? And then tasked with with this, with the other things, we have been triaging and we are trying to get to. Stabilization, if you will, to a point where we're not triaging so much. And some areas were there and some areas were not. So just using that language is. That's a reality of where we have been and trying to use the resources that we have. To get the information so we can triage, so we can get to stabilization and hopefully. You know, eventually move to a place where we are uh looking forward beyond uh this COVID nineteen.
May I also add, uh, Mr. Todd, a point that um hopefully. A a new development to help improve communications is that um. We're starting quarterly meetings now beginning in January and every other month um with um. Some board members along with SAT, the Superintendent's Action Team. Along with um the PNEA Executive Board Representatives and so. I think the hope that we all have there is that we will see improved communication or. Not improved, but more communication at a very difficult time that our district has never seen before. And this isn't something that we typically do, but recognizing a need to bring those groups together. In a cohesive manner, um, we're hoping that that will aid in this collaboration effort.
Thanks for mentioning that, Debbie. Um, who else has some questions?
Um. Just I'm sorry, it's like a really quick follow-up on that, I think. Um. Obviously, you know, trying to coordinate input of, I don't remember exactly how many features we have, but it's a lot. Um, on a decision that obviously people have really strong um feelings about is incredibly difficult, particularly with the timetable. Um, just curious as to, you know, as we get down to the building level where plans, the rubber kind of meets the road on plans. Do we feel like teachers have had more opportunity to provide input there into kind of operations of the school? Buildings, if that's part of kind of where people are experiencing some level of anxiety, or if there's opportunity for that over the next few weeks.
So, oh, go ahead, Dr. Marty.
Oh, no, you go. Go ahead. Go ahead, Dr. Watson.
So clearly, every principal has a system and a structure in place to seek pe- feedback. You know, we we've referenced uh. Building leaders, building leadership team, department leaders, um CLTs. And so every principal has their own structure and system as to how they seek that input. They, there are leadership teams, if you will. Um, again, they might be called different things, but there are ways that teachers give input. Uh, all of the time, not just during uh COVID nineteen and and the pandemic, but all of the time. Um, in regards to schedule um and other specific things that that really happen in a building. So could I give you the the specific plan of every building and what it looks like? No. But I can assure you that our principals have a structure in place where they are getting input. On an ongoing basis from their staff formally and informally.
Uh, I'll go next. Um, what are the citizen statements? And unfortunately, I cannot read my own handwriting, but I know his first name began with a Z. Uh, he posed a couple of questions, one of the third of which was about teacher input, which I think we've addressed. Uh, his first two, I'd like, um, I I think it'd be good to provide the answer to him. Uh, his first question was. Um, why is a board are we still meeting virtually as when we're sending students back to school or contemplating sending students back to school? And two, why was this decision made now uh with so many days and weeks ahead of the beginning of the second semester?
I'll take the second question first. Uh, I I I believe we owe it and I think we talked about this at the last board meeting. Uh, our families uh need to uh do some planning um ahead of the second semester. And so I think right now, uh, we're asking the board uh to approve a plan that allows families. To look at that schedule that uh Dr. Watson posted and uh for some families, it there will be. Uh, uh, time for our need to find childcare on the days. That uh were not in session, either, you know, again, PD days, uh, some of it in the calendar or the distant learning days. Uh, so we wanna, we want to get that out so families can effectively plan. And as well as staff members can effectively plan for the second semester. Um, the the, I think, uh, Dr. Becker, uh, I think our high school teachers are going to be getting their second. Or third quarter uh schedules here shortly. If not, I think right before the break, maybe they're getting them as we speak. And so they can begin to plan effectively for what instructions could look like on an um on an in-person basis. So I think it's fair to get uh to to make this decision now. Uh, so people can begin to plan over break and of course immediately after the we come back, there's only a couple of weeks until. Um, until that start of the second semester. Um, as far as the other question, what was the other question, Kevin?
The uh board meetings being conducted virtually.
Well, I think we're still under a county order on terms of uh meetings, um, in terms of how many can be gathered. Um, but I know Jeff and Todd, I know it'd be interesting to get back in person, but I believe we we still have the county executive with, I think, uh. Still a still a pro hip uh uh. Uh, restriction on how many people can gather for a public meeting. So we hopefully, if not in January, I will be back in session hopefully in February.
Yeah, I would definitely say that uh as as soon as we're officially allowed to from the. Uh, the county orders, um, we will be back in person. We've said that all along that. Uh, whenever we feel uh that that it's appropriate to have students in the building and. We should be uh in person for our board meetings as well. So we will do that as long as we're we're legally allowed to.
Um, having conveyed one of our speakers' questions, I'd like to follow up with a couple of my own. Uh, first being. Our plan calls for uh or the recommendation calls for four days. In person and um most Mondays being done uh virtually. Uh, I guess the my question's twofold. What's the purpose? Uh, if you could elaborate on the purpose of that uh extra day being done virtually. And the likelihood of that day of us staying in that model throughout the whole semester and what might affect that decision?
Um, again, I'll start and turn it off to uh either Chelsea or Robin to talk a little bit about the the purpose. Um, we we are uh we're we're providing a comprehensive schedule for what we think, what we believe we uh will experience. While Robin talks about a vaccine for staff in February into March, uh, we know that there won't be a widespread uh. Distribution for the community till likely later in spring, early summer. So the likelihood is that we'll, you know, still have a. Uh, we'll still be dealing with community spread, we'll still be dealing with some of the issues that we're we're dealing with. Now, saying that, if suddenly things were to uh improve, the vaccine were to, you know, become accessible. And uh the numbers improved, uh, we could quickly pivot and be back for the fourth quarter. Um, I don't think it would take much to do, be able to do that. But I think only to be fair to our families as we plan for that whole second semester, uh, that this is the plan we're presenting tonight. And um, if if things would improve uh significantly, uh, we could pivot and and be back. You know, for uh for five days of instruction. Um, I think we covered a little bit about the the days. Chelsea or Robin, you wanna just review again the two reasons? Uh, why we would, um, you what 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 the purpose of the days? Uh, the day of the two, the the day of, excuse me, the the two reasons were. Um, uh, citing for the business learning days.
Is Kevin, do you just want us to elaborate a little bit more on the two reasons that we mentioned earlier?
Yeah, I suppose.
Tracing and the cleaning.
Yeah, it, I I've gotten a lot of feedback. Uh, most of it, we've all gotten various emails and I guess the thrust of them is. Uh, if we're gonna do four days, why can't we do five? And the obviously you presented it, but I guess if you could elaborate just a little bit to speak to some of those parents that are. Perhaps dealing with childcare issues and whatnot that they would hope, they would have hoped for a five day as opposed to the four and one.
Robin, Robin is really on the front lines with our contact tracers. Um, I I will tell you. Um, that recently I did talk to an assistant principal. Who was talking about the contact tracing and how time consuming it is. Um, she actually was sharing with me that uh she is not able to see students who want to see her. Because she's contact tracing. This is an assistant principal in one of our high schools. Um, and all of our assistant principals take their responsibilities very, very. And, you know, seriously and um hearing her voice was uh. Actually, it it, I was sad. Because she spends so much time contact tracing that she is not able to meet some of the needs of the students who. Who need her in in other ways. And so I know how time consuming it is and what we continue to hear. Is a lot pops up over the weekend. Um, I hear it from the principals as well. So and. And I've heard it from Robin. So Robin, will you want to expand on that a little bit?
Definitely, there's a lot of transmission that comes to light over the weekend. So we often are dealing, particularly on Sundays, are dealing with a lot of cases. So it's almost impossible to get all that data. Um, investigated and entered before Monday morning. So having having that time. That we can um devote to doing the contact tracing, to doing the data entry, so our dashboard maintains integrity is really important. And I would just second what you said about the administrators that are working on this. It's just an incredibly time-consuming process. And so have just having this time set aside so we can get get that work done, I think is really important. And then you mentioned about the um. Cleaning protocols and the opportunity to actually come into a building relatively empty. And be able to use the disinfectant. come into a building relatively empty and be able to use the disinfectant sprays in places where, you know, they want to let that sit without people there. So it does facilitate that also.
Dr. Wallen, can I ask, I need to follow a question up with that. On the weeks that you showed on the calendar that we have off, but we're in-person learning, but that we have a day off, either a PD day or a holiday. What happens to deep cleaning on those weeks? Well, we don't have virtual learning or a distant learning day, but we're going four days a week. And then we have President's Day or some other holiday or spring break or something. Is there room for doing that deep cleaning on those weeks?
I am going to ask Patty to jump in because we have talked about that and she just sent me an email this afternoon after working with members of her team on that plan. So Patty?
Thank you very much. So very good points and very valid points that we've been looking at the calendar and looking at, at what we will do in order to provide those deep cleaning or detail cleaning days as we have addressed. So the Martin Luther King Day is of course the first holiday that comes up. The good thing about that is the Friday there, the Friday beforehand, it's going to be elementary in session only. So we do believe that we'll be able to get the deep cleaning provided on that Friday evening and the buildings will be ready for that Tuesday morning. The next one is President's Day, which is in February. The students actually have a no school day on the Friday, so that will allow for all the custodians to do a more thorough cleaning on that Friday. There are times when we're going to have either a Monday or a Friday that is a scheduled day off where we won't have necessarily that, that one day for cleaning. So we are going to work with the custodial staff to ensure that all the work is completed before they leave on the Friday, or they will come back on the Saturday to complete and have additional overtime in order for everything to be thoroughly cleaned.
Thank you.
A couple of quick follow ups on those same points, I think just for some clarification. When, I'll just ask them both in whatever order. When we say we need to do contact tracing on Monday because of things that have come up over the weekend, that doesn't mean that the close contact happened over the weekend from like not school sponsored events happening in our schools. It means that we were notified that a close contact happened, right? Okay. So I think that that's just a little bit of a point of confusion out there. And then my second, go ahead.
Well, so often, a typical scenario is somebody starts to feel bad on Thursday and then maybe Friday or Saturday, they go get tested and they get the results on Sunday. That's a really typical scenario. So then we, we need to go back to Tuesday because two days before they became symptomatic and look at all their contacts in the school setting, both Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. So it's, and then, you know, a lot of interviews and a lot of counseling and, and just, it's just a time consuming process.
Cool, thank you. And then my other question, some people have raised a question about why we can't have our janitors or custodians come in over the weekend to do cleaning citing that they believe we've had a lot of cost savings as a district from having had our buildings closed and feeling like we can incur the expense of the overtime without a problem, probably for contact tracing as well versus having it happen on Monday during a typical workday. So can somebody just kind of speak to our ability to incur additional expenses to have staff come in on a weekend to take care of those things on a Saturday or Sunday?
So first, I'll go ahead and address all of our staff working on the weekend. What we have experienced over the last few months, even when we had a team of our custodial staff that was quarantined, we had the request out there for overtime and we did not have a lot of takers or volunteers on that. So we do have that issue where, you know, we have very high quality workers, but sometimes, you know, they value their family time as well on the weekends. So now to address the financial portion of that. Yes, I have to say, we do have some savings in some areas due to our learning being mostly distant, you know, just taking energy in our buildings. We are doing what's fiscally right and, you know, minimizing our HVAC systems. We have fuel savings because our buses right now are only running essentially one route instead of the three route system. We also have a lot of savings in food supplies. Our lunch distribution and our meal preparation is extremely lower right now versus what it was this time last year. Now, we couple that with, we also don't have the food service revenue from those lunches, so we have loss of revenue. We have additional expenses for hand sanitizer, cleaning supplies, the masks, the gowns, the PPE that's needed. We also know that we have cuts in state revenue and then we also have reductions in revenue such as our community ed. So major players in that is our adventure club, you know, or after school activities as well. So there's a lot of combination of pluses and minuses, but it's not, you know, financially that did not play into the decision for us to be virtual versus in person. The other additional expense too will be our substitute costs because with the number of employees in quarantine, you know, from time to time, we do need that substitute to be taking over that class. So certainly that has been, you know, a projection that we do have that we will have increased substitute costs as well.
As far as asking our nurses and administrators to work all weekend on contact tracing, I, I'm just going to be honest, I mean, I don't think that's, that's fair. And then secondly, I think, you know, we, we also, as Robin said, Mondays are a time for us to make those calls rather than having students come to school who may already, they, they could be, you know, not in school and, and perhaps we're, we're keeping more people safe and healthy by doing the contact tracing and notifying people who then need to be in quarantine. So there's other factors here. I, I know people want to be in, you know, in session, you know, more than, than the four days, but I do believe the contact tracing, the cleaning is important at this time. The contact tracing, and again, Robin is in the front lines of this, but people already work the weekends doing that. Robin, I know, spends a lot of her time on Sundays and over the weekends and other nurses and administrators. And so I don't think just asking people to work more on weekends is really, is feasible or is it fair? People also have lives and, and also I think being able to do a real thorough job of contact tracing will keep more people safe and healthy.
Let me, I totally agree. And I, I think it's also really important for our staff's mental health to take those breaks on the weekends. We're not designed to work seven days a week, 24 hours a day. Everyone deserves that. So I just, I just think hearing that helps people understand kind of all of the input points that are going. So thank you, I appreciate that response.
Like some of the, some of the work with contact tracing really needs to happen in the building. So if you find out on Saturday that, you know, somebody was in a classroom and you want to, you may need to take a tape measure into that classroom and actually measure the distance between where that infected person was and another person. So having, you know, having in-school time when you can do that is really important. So it's been great in the blended model actually because we've had every other day to have time to go in and do those kinds of, that, that work that's part of contact tracing too, so.
I have a question that follows up on something Patty said. A couple of weeks ago when we were here and we made the transition at the middle school and high school level away from hybrid and back to the distance learning, one of, well, to me, what really resonated is, you know, we just didn't have teachers. We didn't, you know, the rate of teachers being absent from classrooms just wasn't sustainable for that model. What's different this time around? How are we just better prepared? How do we ensure that we're able to, to staff high school and middle school and when we come back? I guess all levels.
Mike, do you want to address that?
Yes. So one of the things that we were able to do, Mr. Seltzer, when we moved back to virtual learning on the secondary level to repurpose those high school building subs to the elementary school. And when we did that, we found that the fill rates went really low and we had a high return from Kelly Services. Was it perfect? No. When we look at fill rates back in, during the time in November, as Dr. Watson shared in, in the November board meeting, that those fill rates were around 76, 77%, leaving about 20 unfilled positions throughout each, throughout the district. Each building had a different number of that 21. And so really looking at ways to help with that, we've reached out to Kelly Services, which is our sub provider. The state changed the requirements for substitutes, lowering the amount of hours. And Kelly Service was able to train more substitutes to get into the pool. Starting second semester, we'll have a number of graduates from the university. I've reached out to several universities in our area and those that have historically had students come back to apply for Parkway. And so reaching out to try to find those individuals and have them apply into Kelly Services to sub within Parkway. We estimate that our numbers of Kelly Service subs will be higher coming into second semester due to those, those situations.
Mr. Seltzer, but what I would say is, is the reality is, if we can't sustain the day-to-day operations because we have so many employees, so many teachers in a building that are quarantined, that's when we have to think about, you know, can we safely run school? Do we have adults to teach kids, monitor kids, so kids can learn and everyone can be safe? And if we realize that because of adults being sick and quarantined and we know how long they have to be out, then we have to make some decisions about what school looks like. Which could be closing a school, which I know has happened in some other districts throughout this time.
And I was going to add that could apply to some of our support staff positions as well. So the number of custodians, we know that other school districts have had push notifications because they're unable to have enough bus drivers to run the routes as well. So certainly that will be some of the data points that we look at before we make any type of decision on that as well.
I do have a question regarding, I know one of the areas or one of the times of the day that people are really concerned about is lunch. There are districts who are completely avoiding the lunch issue. I know that may be difficult for us for various reasons and so we still have lunch. And I know that you mentioned the enhanced lunch protocols. I'm sure we've heard those before, but how might those look different or what might those be considering we have higher number of kids in the building? And that's a time when the students are unmasked. What are some of those specific things we're doing around lunch?
So Pam, to be honest with you, it, it's a time that, it, it's not the safest time in a building, lunchtime. It, it isn't. It's not the safest time in a building. What our schools will do is the very best they can. And so, you know, we've had schools, some schools, it depends on the cafeteria size, it depends on the staff that they have to supervise. Some of our schools are able to spread kids out more than others based on, you know, some kids are eating in classrooms, some considering, are eating in the cafeteria. Depending on setup, we have barriers in some of our cafeterias. Kids have assigned seats. Our high schools use a QR code that kids have to sign in. But are we going to have kids closer together eating lunch? Probably, I mean, most likely, yes. It is continuing to make sure that kids have time to wash their hands. We know where kids are seated, so we can do that contact tracing. Principals looking, again, where can we spread out and safely supervise kids during lunchtime? But you're right, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's an area that we have to do our very best, which may not prohibit quarantines or exposure.
I had a question about the, the Monday schedule. If we have our students virtually on Monday, somewhere I read that it was, it was the recommendation of having them start at 10:00 AM versus a normal school start time. Can someone explain the rationale for that?
Dr. Beckner, you want to talk about that with high school schedule?
I'd be happy to. So really was based largely on the feedback from the thought exchange that having the shortened Mondays were obviously very well received by students, high school students who love to sleep in, but also by teachers who saw value in having that time at the beginning of the day to prepare, have other meetings, meet with students, do other things that they typically are not able to do and include in part of the school day. So it had really strong feedback from both groups. At the high school level, we're able to make that happen just because of the nature of, they're not currently on a block schedule, they're in a quarter schedule, every day has the same classes and we're able to move to that 10:00 AM start time. And I think we added up it really because of the number of days in the school year or the number of distance learning days in the quarter, ends up being a pretty minimal amount of class time overall. So the benefits seem to outweigh what you're losing. Unfortunately, we're not able to do a shortened schedule at the other levels, again, because of the way the schedule breaks down, whether it be specials at the elementary level with art, music and PE, or the block schedule at the middle school. But as we looked at it and looked at the value that both teachers and students reported that they got out of that time and the fact that we were able to make it happen while sacrificing overall a really minimal amount of class time. And we said, that makes sense. The feedback is there from the people who are involved and who were able to make that happen and go back to the 10:00 AM start time on Mondays for our high school students.
Okay, thank you. I had one other question regarding the quarter versus the semester format. We've heard from some, some students, some parents that the quarter system doesn't lend itself well to some of the, the more robust curricular classes, honors classes and some things like that. Is there any, any plans to go back to the semester system at this point or when we go back to, whenever we go back to in-person school, is, are we going to be back in a traditional schedule for the whole day for high school students?
We agree that there are a lot of benefits, though we, we have heard from people who said, really like only having to navigate three or four classes at a time, that's great. We know there are a lot of benefits to the semester system as well, and we would love to go back to the semester system. In fact, it's in our plan for next year. Unfortunately, as we were developing the second quarter schedule for this year, it became clear that we weren't going to be able to make that schedule work and maintain appropriate class sizes and ensure that all students got all of their courses without committing to the quarter system for the rest of the school year. Just a one simple example is there are students who are not able to start year-long classes until third quarter. And if we went to a semester system now, there'd be students who are not able to get all the credits that they need to earn during this school year. So we are committed to the quarter system for the rest of this year, but are planning to return to a semester system at the beginning of next school year.
Okay, thank you.
Since Dr. Beckner is there, I want to go back to one of his earlier comments real fast. The comment was that we need to give grace and support to our teachers. And I think that's a message we need to get across in a very clear way because all the feedback we get from a lot of the parents, even the ones who are frustrated, always keep saying their teachers are doing a great job, they're working within, there's confines we have right now with COVID and everything else. I think it's very important for all of us to understand that, that they're I think it's very important for all of us to understand that they're working extremely hard to do the best they can in a very, on very strange, awkward, different approach. And with the plan and the recommendation tonight, it does pain me that we cannot avoid the teacher, both teaching to the in-person and to the computer at the same time. And that's, it's tough for the teacher and it's tough for the students too at the same time. And I don't have a great brilliant idea to share, but is there other examples out there that we could consider is are most districts doing that approach right now? I, I know it's tough. I know teachers don't like it. Is that best for the student? But it's the kind of situation we're in.
I know Dr. Marty, Dr. Marty's talked to a lot of his colleagues, so I know he's anxious to jump in on this question first.
You know, one of, one of the, one of the things that we're proud of here in Parkway is that we were able to create the virtual campus setting. So again, fifty-two, I think it's about fifty-two hundred students, right Kevin? On the virtual campus are receiving instruction, daily live instruction from a dedicated teacher. That is very rare. My colleagues don't understand how we were able to do it. Now, when we did that, obviously, we also, you know, created a situation where a number of people, as we heard tonight, want to still get into virtual campus. So now we, as Dr. Beckner reported, we, we now are trying to deal with people and working, you know, the quarantine issue and again, people who, the staff member or students who have short-term needs to, to, to be virtual. We're going to continue working with families and students. But I think all districts are struggling and I, I think all teachers in many districts, again, are, have been doing this all year and that have been in, they've been, been trying to teach, you know, in person as well as like kids zooming in. So I don't think, and Dr. Becker can, from his colleagues can talk about this as well. But at least I am very, very pleased that our virtual campus students and our teachers are able to focus. And we're, we certainly have a large contingent. Unfortunately, Dr. Beckner shared, we will continually put pressure on our teachers in the second semester with students who are going to be, you know, quarantining or have other needs. So we're going to, we're just going to have to help support them and do our best to give them our, our, our support. So Kevin?
The simple answer, Mr. Schindler, to your question is yes, this is what most districts are doing in for most of their high school students. And many of them have, like Dr. Marty alluded to, been in that situation for the entire school year. But as we look around, that is certainly the common practice we see. And it's, it's largely the common practice because creating a separate system for your virtual learners is really, really hard. We certainly tried to do it, but the reality of quarantines is you, you don't have a pool of teachers to move all the quarantined students to. And so that becomes really your challenge. But yes, it's common. Yes, it's challenging in every district. Yes, we wish there were other avenues that we could take from here so that our teachers didn't have to do that. And but it's certainly something that my colleagues and I talk about frequently of, you know, how do we navigate this knowing that our teachers are the ones who really are carrying the heavy load? And particularly at the secondary level in this conversation.
But Matt, you are right. One of the, one of the neat things is that most people are recognizing the great work of our teachers. And so we, we, we need to continually praise them and support them as we continue on in this challenging year.
You know, and that leads, that leads to a question I have. You know, as we get emails from teachers and staff and what we heard from the PNEA tonight, seems like there's a reluctance of a good portion of our teachers to go back to in-person. I know based on the decision tonight, if we decide to go with it, basically there'll be people that'll be very happy and others are going to be very upset about it. So I'm wondering, you know, what, what could be done to personalize being in touch with the teachers that are reluctant to go back, that feel that they don't want to go back? I mean, that's going to create a morale problem to a degree, I would think. But I think we need to reach out to people on a more personalized level. If they're reluctant to come back and why they're reluctant and what can we do to help them to feel better about it and make that transition in a positive way?
Well, Mike Bogus, I don't know if you want to comment, I'll just say that I, I think Mike and his department since last spring have done a really good job. And obviously we have a number of teachers who are teaching virtual because of really identified health issues. And then Mike continues to meet with staff that have issues, some that come to the surface. And how we can, you know, work with that, build those staff members. And of course, I just have the principals frontline. Again, we talk about our principals, but I think they need to work with those teachers that have concerns and put in place things that'll help, help those teachers. When we've talked to superintendents who have been in session all year, I think what we have heard is fear was a big factor in a lot of districts. But once students started coming back, that some of that seemed to go away. And I think, you know, I think once, you know, staff sees kids and our students have been marvelously compliant about face covering and being, following the guides. But I, I hope that our staff will, you know, respond and, and do what they have to do to mitigate the, their safety. But also to, you know, be honest with the needs that they, they have. And we'll share that with principals or with human resources. But Dr. Bogus, do you have any, any thoughts?
Dr. Sorrentino, most of the beginning of this year, we did math surveys, which is a way to collect a lot of information in a short amount of time. And so we utilize that information, asking teachers and employees if they need assistance or accommodations. And then we plan through those individually. And so when we look at the accommodations needed for staff members, those individual conversations are what we're really wanting to have. So we can understand more of the teacher or the staff member of what accommodations they need, where they are in, in their thought process medically or just anxiety towards coming back to work. And so, you know, are there, has there been large group or, or massive, large amounts of people together? No, we've treated it very individualized up till now. We are working with Pat McPartland and PNEA. One of the things that we're looking at for second semester is looking and bringing in PNEA and teachers to help with the process of selecting placements for next year. As we look, Dr. Beckner shared the virtual learning, virtual learning isn't going away. And so when we look at next year, if we're in a time of COVID and there's still concerns that we would need to place staff members in a virtual campus to meet their needs, we want to plan ahead for that. But we also want to plan ahead for if we have vaccines and we're in a time where there is not the anxiety of COVID, we still will have a number of students that will want to do virtual learning. And so how do we put together a, a selection process for selecting teachers for that program of, of a virtual campus? And so teacher input and by level is going to be very important as we plan for that. And that's next steps in January as we move forward, looking at the, not only the end of this year, but as we continue into next year. And so, you know, we're really spending a lot of time, definitely when we talk with employees, we ask if there's anything else we could do or what we could have done better. We want to be very reflective in, in our process as this has been new for everyone. And so we've gotten a lot of feedback there as well. But just trying to make it as individualized as possible to meet the, in those needs of those individuals as we move forward for placements.
I think that's important.
We also have an employee assistance program that we continue to push out to staff. I know our building leaders have offered it to individual staff members or reminding them that we have this resource that is completely confidential. And so we're very beneficial to have that. And, you know, that is something that we encourage any employee to utilize if they have that need.
Well, I think that's really important and I'm glad some things are being done about it. But I, I do feel some teachers are going to need some personalized attention to make them feel better about this overall. And, and truthfully, the same thing applies to our students and their parents. A lot of parents are going to be very upset about the decision tonight if we decide to accept, accept this plan. And what will be done when we start school on the nineteenth and in an in-person session, situation? What will be done to, to help those students and those families as well? Because some of them are not going to be happy, obviously.
And so what, what we hope is that our parents reach out. You know, the, the only way we can offer that support is if we know how they're feeling. So if, if parents reach out to counselors, to building leaders, to teachers, then we can have that conversation. I know our principals are having that conversation on an ongoing basis. And I know that our teachers are talking to parents and helping them feel more comfortable about their kids being in school and, and, and learning in this pandemic. Because our teachers are amazing and they want their kids to feel comfortable and they go above and beyond to do that. And that means partnering with the family as well. Our teachers also, again, if, if they don't feel like talking to someone in the building, we hope they contact human resources. I know many of our teachers have conversations with building administrators because they have built that relationship. And our administrators are doing the very best they can to, to support them. I offered the employees, you know, assistance program myself when meeting with the teacher a couple of weeks ago because she communicated that this is stressful. And having that conversation, I saw it on her face, I heard it in her voice. And rest assured, she is not the only one that feels that way. Many people feel that way in our schools right now. And so we, we just have to do the very best we can in providing the support. And it looks different in schools based on, on the need and based on the individual staff members. So Sam, you're absolutely right.
Well, I think you're right. And I, I truly feel that everyone will make an effort to make it all happen in a very positive way for everyone. And, but I just think we need to be perceptive of the possibilities of some people having more difficulty than others. And I know our principals and our teachers and our staffs will accommodate them. And I, I just bring it up because I think we, we need to have an awareness toward that.
Sam, I, I agree with you and, and I think that's, that's where I think all of us, I, I'll just speak for myself as a board member, that you struggle with the, with the decision because you want to, you know, we see the, the, the evidence of our grades and our students are, are falling and they're struggling, some of them are struggling. But yet we hear from our teachers about their concerns with going back to in-person. And it's, 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 I would just continue to challenge our administration to keep working on finding ways to offer up more opportunities for people to go virtual if they want to go virtual. And as we hear, there may be some people that want to, that are in virtual that may want to revert to in-person. And it's just, I think, I, I don't want to see us either back ourselves into a corner with this plan that we can't, if we have to push back to all distance learning because of the numbers, you know, we're looking, we're talking about a decision to be made a month from now on January the nineteenth, and a lot can change between now and then. And now we're also hearing about variants of the virus occurring in other countries right now. And who knows if that will carry over to the United States or not, but you can only think that it, it may. And then what ramifications are going to occur there when we're seeing, you know, a, a new strain of this virus come out that is potentially more infectious than the one that we currently have? But those are things we cannot plan for right now, other than just to say, I think we still have to have an open mind that we might have to flex back and forth between in-person and hybrid or distance learning again. And I think that's just the reality of dealing with, with the pandemic globally. I do have one other question on the operation side with students with masking during PE class. I mean, now that we're all going to be, the students are all going to be inside, we're in winter weather. How is that going to be handled?
I can, I can speak a little bit to that. The masking is now recommended for all student athletes all the time, including PE. And it appears, we recommend that parents send in more than one mask in case it gets kind of sweaty or wet, but, but it's, it appears to be working fine with our kids, even our student athletes.
Okay, good, thank you.
Ball games, I'm, I'm amazed that the kids are wearing their masks, they're keeping them on, they're competing at, at a high level. So they're, they're very compliant again and no problems.
Dr. Wallen, I noticed on, I was just taking a look at our help screener, the daily help screener that parents or students fill out or even staff have to fill out. One of the mitigating factors is if you're awaiting a COVID test, that you should quarantine. And I believe we've had some instances within our district where people come to the school awaiting a COVID test because they may not be symptomatic, but then lo and behold, they have positive test. And then they're quarantined that has to take, take place. Can that be added to our daily help screener to tell people, you know, are you awaiting? You know, just like they have to check that box, yes, I'm awaiting a COVID test. And that their instructions should be not to show up to work or school.
Right. I mean, the exception would be if somebody's awaiting a COVID test just because they're curious, but they don't really have a close contact or a reason. So if, if you're just doing a COVID test, maybe you're planning to travel to see your relatives and you want to make sure that you're negative, but you don't have any symptoms and you don't have any close contacts. In that situation, you really don't need to stay home. But if you're getting a COVID test because you have a close contact or you're having symptoms, then you should stay home. We could clarify that if that's not clear enough already on that, on the screener. But yes, people, people are coming to, coming to school when they shouldn't in many different scenarios. You're muted, Mrs. Hopper.
Thank you. It would seem that that would help reduce the necessity of some quarantines if some of that were imposed a little bit better. Also, has there been discussion about mandating the vaccine for our staff and teachers?
We've, we've discussed it and dismissed that as a, as an option at this point. There's no, I, I heard Dr. Williams, Dr. Randall Williams speak this morning or this afternoon on a state webinar. And he said that the state has no plans to make the vaccine mandatory at the state level. So we're really hoping that we can encourage people to get it because it's the right thing to do. We have really high rates of flu vaccine adoption in Parkway. So I'm hopeful that, that staff will want to take it.
Just, I don't, maybe any reflections, quick reflections anybody has on this. But this notion that we keep seeing presented that like the kids are falling behind is, I will admit, very frustrating to me because our kids are surviving a global pandemic as are all of we. And behind is kind of a construct that we've all just agreed to yet. You know, it's really real for people, I think, especially when people are looking at finishing up college acceptance, those kinds of things. So can you just quickly reflect, speak to how you think our students are doing overall? You know, beyond what you said, Kevin, Dr. Beckner, and our ability to get them where we would expect our Parkway kids to be, but also recognizing that, you know, our kids do need to focus on survival right now in the same way that a lot of us do.
Yeah, no doubt our kids are learning a lot during the pandemic that is not related to what they learn in our curriculum. And we know that. And that's what parents, you know, keep telling us. We, we know that, we know the kids have lost a lot this year. They've lost a lot since March. That's certainly a reality. Not all of that is in the scope Not all of that is in the scope of their curricular learning. I mean, and we just need to acknowledge that the kids have lost lots of opportunities to do different things. Of course, as we look at our data, as you saw, like they're continuing to, as a whole group, I don't know what the right term is for it. But I think it's really a testament to our families, our kids and our teachers that they, we haven't seen declines greater than what we've seen so far. But I continue to be hesitant, kind of on, I guess, on the grounds that you're laying the the question, I continue to be hesitant to just to either say everything's great or the world's falling apart. I think what we've seen is our kids have gained and lost different things in different spheres of their their life. And how we reckon with that, once our students will be back is yet to be seen. It's going to be a challenge. That's why we continue to talk about the whole child, right? Talk about the social and emotional components, talk about the academic component. Are we going to, are we going to do everything in our power to make sure that any academic ground the kids lost while they have been trying to learn through this pandemic are closed? Yeah, we're certainly going to do that. But we also know that there's a lot of curriculum just in America, in America's schools, and we've really tried to narrow that curriculum to focus on what's really essential. That's going to continue to be important when kids are back because there's going to be a lot of things that we're going to have to do to address kids' needs when they come back. And they're not all going to be, you know, about multiplying fractions, though that's going to be part of it. But there's going to be a lot of other things that we have to do too. So I'm not sure how well I'm addressing your question, Ms. Davis, but I'm I'm feeling what you're saying is there's a lot going on here that we're going to have to do once we have our kids back in school. And some of it's certainly going to have to be academic work to make sure we're closing gaps. But other other work we're going to have to do is about making sure the kids can continue to socialize well with each other, that they're learning. You know, many of the things that are just valuable, things like curiosity and creativity and play and all kinds of different things. And we're going to have to try to balance all of that once we have our kids back.
And Ms. Davis, I'd like to add to, I know I've spoken many times about this, but the students, our students with special needs especially, and the gaps that are continuing to increase in their that they have limited access to their programmatic, to their special education needs, their minutes. To our students who are deaf, hard of hearing and interpreters, technology doesn't work all the time, always doesn't work well, even on Zoom meetings like tonight at the board meeting. The closed captioning is like 30 seconds behind. So you know, technology is great, but it also doesn't meet the needs of those students, especially that an in-person instruction would be able to do as well.
Yeah, and the really tangible side for those kids, it'll be, you know, down the road, what do we need to look to do in terms of advocacy to be able to help make up minutes for kids or even extend for kids that'll age out of school and truly are losing out on something that they need this year. But that's that's down the road at this point.
Dr. Matheson, while you're on, how has it been going with the students that have been returning? Who were who are our struggling learners over the last couple of weeks?
Yeah, good question. We've had that going now for a couple of weeks, right, where we've added students who have 80% or more time in special education classes at the elementary level, going from two days to four days. Students had programmatic needs and also students with some specific services and therapeutic services as well as programmatic. I've gotten a chance over the last three weeks, I've visited, I think, eight or nine elementary schools, had an opportunity to walk around, check in on teachers, take a look at some of those classrooms. And from what I'm seeing, it's going very well. Are there some struggles? Yes. Are there some things when it comes to social distancing? Yes, but as I'm walking in those rooms, kids are doing a great job with their masks, their teachers have great plans for hand hygiene. And what I'm hearing from, anecdotally from parents and the staff members, many of them are excited to have those students back in the classrooms as they're seeing them starting to grow at higher levels than they would have in the virtual space. So to be able to increase that for more students, I think would be a benefit to all. So I would say that it's gone very well. But with anything, there's hiccups, there's little things that are going on, but our teachers are really are really working hard to meet the needs of our kids.
Thank you.
Bouncing around just a little bit, last question for me. Robin, do we have any, anything we can do when there are families or people that we know or have strong reason to believe are lying to our contact tracers?
So I have used the health department in situations like that and asked the health department staff to call individuals. But we've also run into situations where where individuals have lied to the health department also, and then we run into kind of roadblocks. So we're really trying to create a culture of trust and honesty. And it's really, really important for everybody's safety. So just, but yeah, that's probably one of the most frustrating things is dealing with dishonesty. But I have, I will, I have been known to pull in the health department to help me.
Yeah, it's tough. It's unfair to the whole community.
It is. And really, it's a bad example for our kids, really bad.
Not just unfair, it's terrible.
Yes.
I would say also, Kristi, you know, when you have a group of students who don't necessarily tell the truth that comes out during the contact tracing investigation, we ask the principal just to have to call the family and and share, you know, hey, you know, being honest protects you and protects your family members and protects your friends and here at school and their family and just just have that conversation so people understand, kids understand the possible ramifications of that and that families know that that has occurred.
And I know it's rare, but if somebody won't wear their mask, takes it off, puts it under to the nose, hangs it from their chin, they cannot stay in the classroom or the school building, correct?
Dr. Matheson, I know you've responded to that before. You want to take it?
Right. I mean, just like with any disciplinary fraction that we may have around clothing or anything similar to like insubordination. Of course, we want to teach first and try to change the behavior, but if we have students who are absolutely not following those rules when it comes to wearing their masks and and social distancing and following the orders of the school and the teacher, then absolutely, there could be some school consequences for that as well. We want to make sure everyone's in a safe environment. We also want to make sure we are have an opportunity to teach in those moments as well around. It's a mixture of both.
I'll ask one more question that's made. I'm not sure who this would go to, so I'll just leave it open. What circumstances would cause the district to relook at this plan to go back to either hybrid or in all distance learning for the entire district?
Well, Dr. Watson covered, you know, individual school situations. If we had, you know, such a significant impact on staffing that involved, you know, three quarters of our schools or we had community spread. And in that case, I think the health department may be intervening or the county executive. We certainly would would have to react. But I think, you know, right now, we would, we would, we would look at a school or an area. But again, if the situation is such that we can't run many schools because of quarantining and not enough adults, we may have to think differently about a good portion of the district. But we have not seen that at other school, other districts have had to close individual buildings and schools. We have not seen a whole district react. So I think, you know, I think we're hopefully in a situation where we'll we'll you know, deal with those situations that come up as an individual school. But Dr. Watson, I don't know if you have any more thoughts?
Dr. Marty, I think you you've covered it.
Certainly, we know that this is fluid and we've talked about that, but we just have to be aware, and we are. I mean, we're, that's why, you know, each one of our superintendent's action team meetings, just like at a board meeting, Robin gives us a summary, an update. And we will continue to do that and we will continue to be diligent about data and information and what we're seeing and react accordingly.
Any board members have any further questions? Okay.
I'll just throw one, is that really a question, I guess, is for Dr. Wallen, perhaps, is that will we be keeping an eye on the study for the is in the process with Wash U, SLU and several of the school districts in the St. Louis County and surrounding Missouri? My understanding is that it sounds like data collection is still taking place with that study to see what the transmission rate is within schools and to do an evaluation of that, but that some of those results won't be coming out for about three months or so.
Right, right. But yes, all the studies that are currently underway, not just here, but in other places, I think, are helping feed our understanding of the of what's going on. And that study in Mississippi that I mentioned is one of the first that actually is pointing the finger towards less transmission in the school than in the than in the community. So, you know, we welcome those studies very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have anything? Okay. Well, again, thank you all very much for for laying out the plan as you did and for answering the many questions that we've had. I can tell you that many of these questions came directly from members of our community and and staff and teachers, parents, students, and and we appreciate you responding to those. So at this time, may I have a motion and a second to approve the comprehensive second semester delivery of instruction beginning January 19th, 2021? That includes students having five days of live instruction per week with a minimum of four in-person days per week as the school calendar allows.
So moved.
Second.
Nikki, would you please call roll?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. Cieratino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to our next agenda item, which is a Board of Education resolution on COVID-19 leave extension. I will turn it over to Dr. Bogus, our chief HR officer for a brief introduction.
Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Hopper, members of the board, Dr. Marty and Mrs. Stover. I present to you this evening a proposal for extending protection to our employees as it relates to COVID-19 leave. As you are aware, the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, including the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, will expire December 31st, 2020. With no clear plans from the federal government to extend employee protection, the district proposal will provide 10 additional days of protection for employees that contract COVID and or have to be quarantined or isolated due to a close contact to someone with COVID. Utilizing Missouri School Board Association recommendations, this board resolution will serve as an extension of protection until June 30th, 2021, or until a federal protection act is created to replace it. Thank you for your consideration and I'm open to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Dr. Bogus?
I'll just say that we did review this in advance and had opportunity for questions. So I think we all got pretty well. If you just want to, one of my questions was that we'd only be offering 10 days. And that, do you want to walk through a little bit of that as to how you came up with the 10 days and the days leading up to the 10 and following that 10 days?
Most definitely. So the the Family First Coronavirus Leave Act Response Act currently has 10 days in the system to allow for employees to utilize those 10 days. We've had several staff members already utilize those up until this point. And so the concern really is, as we move forward into January 1, after the expiration of the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act expires, we definitely want to provide protection for individuals and adding 10 more days. Staff would still utilize three of their sick days as we move forward and follow a similar pattern that was in the federal legislation of the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act. We're just continuing that in lieu of a federal a federal act. Most districts are utilizing something along these same lines. Missouri School Board Association recommendations were provided to HR Chief Human Resource Officers around the state and and we talked with our colleagues and to to find a a length of time for us, 10 days is what we're quarantining in the county across the river in Say Charles, they're utilizing sometimes seven days in that, but we wanted to hold true to the CDC recommendations and all the things that we're learning from Dr. Wallen in terms of when we do put somebody in isolation or quarantine to protect our employees when there's no federal protection in place.
And this would all be paid for by the Parkway School District?
Correct. Everything starting January 1 would be paid out of Parkway funds with no ability to recoup currently and no ability to recoup costs with with any CARES Leave Act or various other agency money. We could find that with the new administration in the White House, they might do something in retroactive. But right now, there are no plans in place on the federal government level. The $900 billion that was voted on this evening dealt more with businesses, but did not have employee care and employee protection in there. And so that makes it even more important for us to pass this legislation or this resolution as we move forward into second semester.
If I could add just briefly too, even with the leave that was covered through December 31st of 2020, it was a very, very minimal tax break that Parkway well, Parkway could actually take a credit for. And that's only the 6.2% of the OASDI, so the FICA taxes on those employees that actually pay into Social Security. So majority of our employees are with the PSRA system and they do not pay into Social Security at all. So I think our last tax return, we were able to have a tax refund that was less than $4,000, but that was nowhere close to our actual expense that we did encounter with the leave.
Thank you.
Anyone have any further questions for Dr. Bogus or Mrs. Deadgore? Okay. May I have a motion and a second. The Board of Education approved the resolution on COVID-19 leave extension as presented in the December 21st, 2020 board meeting materials.
So moved.
Second.
Nikki, would you please call roll?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. Cieratino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. We have no special meeting, we have no closed session to adjourn to, so may I have a motion and a second to adjourn the special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, board member. Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much. Thanks, everyone, for watching tonight and we will see you soon.